Okay, I'm going to call to order a workshop on budget. This is our first workshop on budget this year. We actually have six of them scheduled at the current time. This is our first one, and I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Roloff, to lead us through tonight's discussion.
Thank you. There's a handout that we had given you in the last week's packet. That's most of what we're going to talk about tonight. There's some projections on personnel costs that I asked them to tighten up a little more, so they're actually finishing those up right now. I made some last-minute changes, but I want to walk through a lot of information, where we're at. So there's seven items on the agenda: overall economic picture, historical look at taxes, revenues, expenditures, current and prospective revenues, then just talking about where we think expenditures are going, talk a little bit about debt and fund balance, and then lastly, pick a date and outstanding topics that you want to discuss at the next work session. In terms of the overall economic picture, the state is in the middle of its biennial budget, so the changes that are happening are relatively minor, which is good in that we aren't going to get any surprises from the state, but the bad news is that there's no change in the numbers on virtually any account. There will be a 1.5% increase in state aid for transportation aids. That's a fairly large number in our budget. It's probably one of our top seven revenues in the general fund, but that's really the only revenue that's getting changed. If you've taken a look at some of the numbers, you know, one of our largest revenue sources is state shared revenue, and state shared revenue has gone up, or excuse me, from 2012 to 2014, it's gone down by $1,000. So essentially, state shared revenue is frozen, so that kind of gives you an idea of where the state is on things.
Mark, before you go on, just back on that transportation, is that across-the-board type thing, or is that an itemized, like it'll help us in gas, it'll help us in whatever?
This is transportation aids statewide.
Okay.
Excuse me.
So it's roads, it's infrastructure, it's not just tran-- when I was thinking transit, like the bus, it's statewide. I mean, everything that the state helps us with, streets and roads and all that?
Yeah, that whole pool of money is 1.5% up. Now, there are formulas that are used by the state, and we may or may not benefit from that, because what they do every year is the state, through the formulas for transportation aids, shared revenue, they reslice the pie, so to speak. There's a variety of formulas. With prospective transportation aids, one of the things that works in our favor a little, and if you take a look at the history, our numbers have been inching up a little bit in recent years. Part of that aid is because there is a benefit to doing all these roads, because what the formula, when you're spending more on roads, the formula assumption is that, oh, if you're spending more on roads, that must mean you need more money, so you actually get a little more. A couple of years ago, we had a bump at a time when the state was actually reducing the revenues, and we got a bump up. And that was because when we started to ramp up our streets in '09 and '10, we felt the bump, it was about 2012, I believe that was. Overall, it's going up 1.5%. Does that mean ours is going up 1.5? I'm not saying that, because it could be less or more, depending on how the formula is. If statewide, more cities put in more roads than us, then they'll get more money. It turned out that when we were building roads, we built it at a time when probably other communities were backing off. You know, we were very aggressive, really, at the depths of the recession. We benefited from that. So those things can, those things go through their ebbs and flows.
Mark, staying on the transportation, could that figure be affected by the Transportation Trust Fund fiasco that's going on in Washington now? You know, there's discussion that Transportation Trust Fund could run out of money in August. Would, if that happens, would that affect this state?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is our state gas tax money. The only time we get federal gas tax money, federal gas tax money goes to the state and then gets distributed. It's not through here. The Main Street project that we're planning for 2016 now, that is where we ultimately get the trickle of federal money down to the local level. So part of the Main Street project is surface transportation program, and we'll get a little bit of money then. There, you know, there may be an impact there, that things could get slowed up, but I think we're okay.
I would just add to Mark, too. I think that's a good question. I know that people at the state are also looking at the impact of alternate fuel vehicles on the gas tax, you know, and because people are using less and less gas, is that going to impact the fund? So I, I think they're looking at it in such a way where they're trying to preserve it and not have to develop other resources, so, but it's a good question.
If you take a look at page seven of the handout that you got, I wasn't planning to go this route, but I really prefer the give-and-take of discussions. I think you're going to learn a lot more, and that's really, your, the purpose of tonight is just to get a good base of information, so that when you get into the budget, a lot of this stuff becomes a little more second nature to you. About two-thirds of the, no, three-quarters of the way down, state and county aids. There's your, there's your aid to local streets, the big numbers there. Aid to local streets, municipal services, state shared aids, and the last one in that section is expenditure restraint. Those are the big state aids. Those are four of the largest seven revenues that the general fund has. State aid to local streets, you can see that there was a bump up from 12 to 13, about $160,000. That was the trickle effect of doing some street projects, but you can see that was a reduction from 2.9 million. The 2.9 million in 2011 to the 2.7 million in 2012 had nothing to do with road building. The state cut that by 10% for everybody statewide. That was part of the Governor Walker's initial budget, and it was, we're cutting state transportation aids to the local government, because he was trying to build up the transportation fund for state projects as opposed to local aid. So that's why that number went down. But you can see, that's gone down over this time. Municipal services, that's the state's kind of payment in lieu of taxes, and I had a meeting a few weeks ago in Stevens Point with all the UW campus communities, and that number is down $100,000, primarily from one year to the net, from '11 to '12, and that it's gone up a little bit. And the reason it's gone up is because the university's been building, and we've benefited a little from that. They reimburse us for police, fire, and refuse. Don't ask me why those three, it goes way back to 1970. Those are the three historical costs that they monitor. The fact that refuses is on our tax bill, we get reimbursed by the state for those things to the degree that we provide services to all the state agencies, the university, the resource center, the prison, et cetera. So with that said, the state used to reimburse us somewhere around the tune of about 80% of the formula costs. Now they're reimbursing us at 44 cents on the dollar, so practically a 50% cut. And that's statewide, and so that number's just been going down and down and down. Meanwhile, there are more and more state, or more and more communities that are trying to get into that, so as state facilities either grow or they add to the state agencies that they consider eligible for this program, we're fighting over more properties that are owned by the state that are now part of the program. It used to be, when the program started in 1970, there were about 100 of those. I think I may have put this in a newsletter a couple of weeks ago, but it was 100 in 1970. 10 years ago, it was about 200. Now it's, it's almost 400 different entities or different facilities that are in there. So the state's not building that many facilities, it's more state facilities are getting in, trying to get their hand in that cookie jar. And what happens is, the traditional recipients of this are just going down.
Mark, when you mentioned that we get reimbursed 44 cents on the dollar, does that mean we're expending a dollar of services to state buildings, so to speak? Let's use the university for an example. We're expending a dollar's worth of services to the university, police, fire, and refuse, and we're only getting 44 cents back for it?
Based on the formula, yes. I would argue we're getting even less, but based on their formula, we're getting 44 cents on the dollar. They've identified costs that they feel would be our proportionate share if the university was paying property taxes, and they go through a really elaborate calculation. You could argue on the calculation that we're still not getting enough, but if you accept their methodology, we're still only getting 44 cents on the dollar right now, but it's...
What was it?
In the last 10 years, it's gone from 80% down to 44 cents. So it's, it hasn't taken long for that program to, to get cut in half. Meanwhile, all this bright cheery news, state shared revenues, you can see the big cut from '11 to '12, and then it's pretty stagnant. And state, what we're hearing, going to stay the same. And the same thing with expenditure restraint. There is some talk, although it's not reflected in this budget, because of everything that's been happening at the state level, some people are arguing, well, we don't need to do expenditure restraint, because levy limits are so effective to keep expenditures down, that maybe we don't need to do expenditure restraint anymore. So it's almost, you know, punishing us for having been punished.
Why don't you explain expenditure restraint?
Thank you. No, great, great question.
It's not a common term.
No, it's technically part of the state shared revenue program, but it's a portion that's carved out, and it's a formula-based program in which you qualify if your tax rate is greater than $5 per thousand, ours is, and your expenditures did not exceed a given amount from one year to the next. You recall, at budget time, we were playing around with that a little bit, because as the council was making some last-minute changes, we came close to perhaps having some expenditure restraint problems, and now I have to remind Trina of some things that I didn't even tell her. So there is a formula that says you cannot exceed a certain percentage, and as long as we keep our expenditures under that amount, we qualify for that money. We have traditionally qualified for that money. The Trina's predecessors were very effective at getting the formula right, so that we qualified for it, but it's a million dollars.
And money can be used for anything?
It's, goes right into the general fund, can be used for any, any general purpose. It basically goes into the general fund, the general, you know, money trough to be used. But you'll recall that one of the things of moving out the recycling fund, that gave us a benefit, that because of some of the increases we had last year, we needed to shuffle things around in order to avoid not qualifying for expenditure restraint. We are very motivated to qualify for expenditure restraint because of the million-dollar price tag on it. My fear is that if the state were to say, well, we already achieved expenditure restraint, we don't need the program anymore, this program could evaporate. It would, by definition, go into the state shared revenue program. I don't know if that necessarily would help or hurt us, I just don't know the answer to that. I don't know if I want to take that gamble and find out. We would lose that million, and who knows where it would go. So it is a portion of the state shared revenue program, but we had to keep a certain percentage. So towards the end of the budget season last year, Mr. Noakes and I went through, and I think we stopped you mid-approval and said, before you approve it, we want to shuffle these things around to make sure we qualify. Council let us do that shuffle, they approved the budget. It didn't change what your priorities were, but literally, we had to move things around in the budget to make us, make sure we qualified. It seems kind of ridiculous at times, and I probably said, please just trust us, because we have, you have to approve it tonight, and we got to qualify tonight, and we did. And when we made the subsequent change, we had to make sure that we didn't fall into that trap again, and we didn't. So we qualified for expenditure restraint, but it's a formula that we have to follow very carefully in order to keep that.
One question. At the time, we have taxes, taxes levied by this city, we have payment in lieu of taxes.
Those are various nonprofit entities that, that we have, through the process of approving their developments, have offered to do a payment in lieu of taxes. Some of the senior care facilities, and I don't want to say one and exclude the other, so I'm not, you know the senior care facilities in town. I can't tell you which ones and how much they do. We can find that out, but if you could just make note of that, Trina. But it's, it's those types of facilities, and I don't want to do a commercial for any of them if they're not paying. But, but those are typically the ones that do pay, and it's typically the, the senior retirement places, the larger ones typically.
How is that? I was going to ask as well, why, why has that gone down more than 50% since just two or three years ago? In fact, it looked like the jump between 2011 and 2012 was substantial in terms of those.
I'm not sure what fell off the radar screen. It's a good question, and I, you know, I think maybe even a council member asked that a while back, and I can't remember what the answer was.
Probably because of the numbers. Think of how many we have now compared to what we had quite, you know, several years ago. I mean, you look at...
Something fell off, though.
Yeah.
Still have a rather large not-for-profit number of organizations, and more growing each, each year. Actually, that number's kind of...
Right.
I'm going to venture a theory. I won't call it a guess, I'll call it a theory, it sounds a little more accurate or valid. Some of these are voluntary.
But sure, but again, relative to all the nonprofit organizations in town, because you can look at churches and all kinds of, the hospitals, all the health facilities, everything that's not...
Yeah.
It's voluntary.
Some are voluntary, some are contractual. Some, we've, as a condition of approval, they agreed to provide this as a payment in lieu of taxes. Some, my experience has been, some of them are voluntary, but it's a good question, and I'll, I'll get you the answer.
And is that a contractual type thing? Do I mean, do we actually send them a letter or something to find out what their answer is, I guess?
Usually, it's based on evaluation of their property, estimated value.
And our assessor sends something out to them, or how's that, how does that work?
Um, I'm not, I don't know if the assessor necessarily does it, but there's a formula by which we determine it, and when it's contracted...
We're not unique to that. I mean, this is something that all municipalities, county even, does and everything else? Okay.
It normally goes to the city.
Okay.
There was some legislation just this year that talked about us sharing this with schools and counties and vote tech districts, and there was a lot of pushback. It's like, the whole purpose of this program was police and fire, because those services are provided to everybody, you know, equally. There's, you know, we don't discriminate when it comes to police and fire. So that was attempted, but no, the answer is no. The school district and the county do not get these, these payments in lieu. This is exclusively ours.
Does this include things like churches?
No, churches typically do not. This is usually, usually the senior complexes. I'm trying to think of some other ones.
But, but in response to your question, it's, all nonprofits could, and that becomes one of the things, there's some churches and other groups begin to act more like profit organizations or take advocacy positions. That issue comes up, or goodwill has been one that's come up as they begin to expand their stores. Are they a for-profit or not-for-profit organization as they compete in it? So they, they would, they would be the kinds of organizations...
Well, seeing Vincent DePaul...
Have property value. This is not a lot of money for the property value that's a nonprofit, so that includes churches across...
There are, there are laws in place that limit the amount of land that even a church can own, and once they exceed that amount, that property may be taxable. Hospitals, we, the assessor does go through those types of things to determine how much of a hospital is for the nonprofit versus the for-profit. Churches, if they have excessive amount of land, anything over a certain amount is suspected taxation. Typically, what happens is, the sanctuary and all the expensive stuff is over here, and it's, it's 10 acres or something like that, and it's all the vacant land that's typically valued as the taxable.
Taxable, yeah.
And so it's vacant land, it's a lot less. So I mean, there's, there's ways, there's legal ways around it. I don't mean to begrudge anybody, it's, if I was the church accountant, I would do exactly what they're doing, and that's what they do.
In the, in the past city that I worked at, actually, the city utility paid pilot to the city on all of their electric assets, so you can utilize it in that manner as well.
So we, we do pay our fair share, we make sure we take ours from, but you had an electric utility, too, which, there's a lot of values of electrical utilities. So the state, I mean, the state in general, it's, there's not much change in those revenues. And you'll, you've just saved me some time down, further down in my presentation, so, but I think we, that's where, kind of where the state is. Were you able to find out from Dave Vicman, because I wasn't sure about transit?
Pretty consistent.
No changes.
Changes.
I think it was the other one you showed me, the state transportation aid, the one I mentioned about the 1.5%, that was the one I was thinking of then, so. And as far as the general economy, I think overall, you know, you listen to the economists that the chamber brings in, you know, things are going well in a macro sense. At the local level, for us, the economy really has a lot to do with things on the micro level that generate permits and whatnot, that's picking up a little bit. Property values are still stagnant. I mean, technically, as you, and when we get to the history, you'll see our, our equalized value, our market value, has been going down. Not drastically, but it's, you can't call it flat, but to call it a decrease is probably almost exaggerating. It's like a very, very flat decline, and we'll get into those numbers later. A lot of the formulas, and we've talked about it, and I know this council has talked, you know, economic development is all about increasing the denominator for debt service, because equalized value is what is one part of the formula for our debt ratio. If we can increase that number, the ratio goes down. But our denominator has basically been stagnant since 2008.
And do we, do we have that yet for this, this most recent year, or is that coming in a month?
Probably coming in the next 30 days. So, but we're not expecting any miraculous recovery, as you'll see with our projections later on.
Standpoint on real estate, it's, real estate is quite healthy right now.
Yeah, so I think, you know, things may start to inch up, but there's always, remember, there's always a two-year delay. So when we're talking about the 2015 budget, you got to look back to the 2013 economy. And so in that respect, 2013, things were starting to pick up. So if you, from your experience in real estate, saw things inch up in 13, we may see a little bit inching up.
The volume right now, throughout the summer, which is active, has been almost pre-crash levels. Dollars are different, a different thing, but just the, the volume is, is pretty healthy.
We'll make note of that for 2016, because it's, it's the two-year effect, so, but from your observations, 13, what, what was it, was it still a little?
It was starting to pick up.
So we may see a little bit of movement. We don't want to count on that optimism. We're assuming flat. We're not assuming down anymore, but we're not assuming up either. We're just going flat. And we'll get into that a little bit later. As far as the current and prospective revenues, that's page seven and eight. Just to give you an idea of where, you know, where we're at, those are really, that's where we are with this year's budget. Did you have the first quarter numbers in here?
Yes.
Okay, maybe we should just go to the first quarter, I'm sorry. 13 and 14. Was there anything that jumped out at you, Trina?
Primarily just the interest.
Interest is not going as well. You know, we're still waiting for that market to rebound, and the interest rates we're getting are still pretty pitiful. You know, we keep our assets pretty liquid, and so, you know, we're getting less than 1% as virtually everybody is. So that's probably the only, the only revenue that's really on the negative side. If you take a look at, you know, building permits, three months actual, they're, they're not quite 25%. That's normal for building permits. The first three months of the year are the absolute worst part of the year for building activity. When we start looking at the six-month numbers, then we'll start to see things, if things are improving, you'll start to notice it then, and by the third quarter, that you'll know for sure. The, the first quarter is generally the worst quarter of the year. And when you take a look at last year's numbers, it was 17.53%, and we're at 14.4. We had some new fees that got kicked in. It takes a while for those things to, to kick in, weights and measure, well, other revenues we haven't, we count on an increase, we haven't seen those yet. So nothing big to worry about right now, with the exception of the interest burden. Expenditure-wise, no big surprises so far. Some of these things are at a little over 20...
Quick question for you, Mark, going back to the fines and cost.
Page 13?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the middle of the page.
Yep.
So how are we?
We're, we're a little down. I can talk to the chief, these numbers go through cycles.
What is interest taxes, talking about the fines and costs? Is that unpaid citations, or what is that?
I believe so. Do you know, Trina? I believe that's what it is.
They know after a while, doesn't it? I, I believe if it's assessed by the municipal court, there's, goes to warrant, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Dead on the county level.
We'll get some information for you on those.
They don't pay it by a certain time, a warrant is issued?
Yeah, I can't remember exactly that one. We'll get that answer for you.
Okay.
Expenditure-wise, again, we're not seeing anything that's jumping out. When we get into the projections a little bit for next year, we'll talk a little bit about how some of the commodities and stuff are doing. We're actually doing okay on those. We projected pretty well. So there's nothing that's jumping out right now from that standpoint. So we're doing all right on current. I've kind of covered the state impact on local revenue a little bit for this year, and then local revenues and limitations. You know, we're still pretty limited on what we can do. You recall that last year, the news we were giving to you at this time was that we couldn't tap into some additional fire hydrant revenue from the water utility because of that change in state law. That thing hasn't changed. Trina and I were just talking about that this afternoon. Excuse me. I don't think anything's necessarily going to change this time around on that. That's why I'm not, you know, state budget there, it's election time, it's not budget time. We're not going to see much at state level for the time being. But the recycling fund, you'll remember that we created the recycling fund, because that was one of the ones that wasn't exempt from that fee increase. We couldn't have instituted a garbage fee, for example, because it would have had absolutely zero impact on the budget. We would have, for every dollar we would have raised on refuse fees, we would have had to reduce our property tax levy, so we left that alone. The revenue for the recycling is really what we went to. Those types of things, I don't anticipate those for 15, because state's busy. As we look to 16, we could have a whole other set of rules going on, depending on what happens with the legislature, depending on what happens with the gubernatorial race, anything could happen. But it doesn't really matter if it's Democratic or Republican, liberal, conservative, right side, left side of the aisle. We're, we're not seeing any bright cheery numbers that are going to drastically change up or down. As far as the historical numbers, it refers to, 4A refers to five-year historical numbers, and it's really more comparison data to other communities as opposed to spending, because most of these statistics are actually on the revenue side. It's stuff we talked about... It's stuff we talked about before, is this, the council has this?
This is the thing.
Okay, so we want to hand these out, so I've got one already. What we did was, we took a look at six Wisconsin communities, our size, including, you know, including us, Eau Claire, West Dallas, Janesville, Waukesha, Appleton, Oshkosh. You know, the Milwaukee ones tend to be a little misleading because the economy's a little different, but I think it bears out some issues to take a look at. You can certainly compare our rankings within each of these categories, and you can certainly do that, and for the most part, we've probably held our own with a couple of exceptions. And Mr. Gray pointed one of them out a few weeks ago in terms of our rate increase, which was, was very appropriate. Some of these others, I think, demonstrate some weaknesses economically. For example, our municipal property tax levies per capita is the second item there, and we are the second lowest after Janesville at $482.91. Meanwhile, Waukesha, higher property values per capita, they're, you know, 250-plus dollars greater than us per capita. That's a huge component of the Moody's rating, so you can see why we aren't in the same category as Waukesha because of their property value per capita. Even with that said, Appleton, which has a very good rating, they're only about $40 more levy per capita, so there are other components. It's not just levies per capita. The municipal tax rate, it's gone up quite a bit, but all the other communities have gone up quite a bit. We still rank third out of six in our tax rate, but that has a lot to do with our equalized value. Take a look at our equalized value, we're fourth out of six, so you can see that, you know, there are some inherent weaknesses that we have. They all kind of get tied together. Property value per capita, property value is all kind of the same. Shared revenue, you can see, because of the way the state formula works, per capita property value is something that the state considers for shared revenue. If you have a lower number, you get more state aid. Therefore, ours is the second highest in shared revenues. So we're, we're greater than Waukesha. You can see, Waukesha doesn't get a lot of state shared revenue, mainly because their property value is so much higher. Appleton's is closer to ours. There's also a per capita component to shared revenues, which probably explains why Appleton gets more money than us, but it's not a heck of a lot more. But you can see poorer communities, poorer defined as property value per capita, that'll, that'll impact you. So comparatively speaking, we do get a bigger slice of the shared revenue pie than others. Debt, clearly a weakness for us.
Mark, stepping, stepping back to.
Oh, sure.
Shared revenues per thousand. Maybe Trina might be better to ask that, or to answer. Okay, ten point eight million dollars. Going over to the general fund revenues, how do I, how do I tie that out? What are the, what makes that ten point eight up of the, under state and county aids? Understand what I'm saying? That'd be the nine, six, six, nine, and then plus something else, or?
I, the state's shared aid, and then I wonder if it's the expenditure restraint as well?
I'm sure it is. So for twelve, ten, eight oh seven, you're, it's going to play out those two numbers together.
So that, that's the two of them there, okay. Well.
Yep.
Looking at that, if I'm going back to... Oh, all right, well, I'm looking, I see only twenty twelve, and I'm trying to.
Right, yeah, you got to go to, yeah, this is only, because that's all we have from the other comparable communities.
Okay, all right.
So there you go.
All right.
Anything else before I get to the next page? General obligation debt, you know, this, we've had a big discussion about that. You can see where our general obligation debt has gone up, is, is much greater than other communities. A lot of that's been historically. We're going to talk about that a little bit later. What we're using debt for is as much a component as anything else. That's a big consideration, what we're using debt for. There are things that we can talk about, streets and, you know, big ticket items, but it's other things that we're using debt for, and when we're talking about managing debt, we got to have that discussion, and we're going to save that a little bit, a little bit for later. The number doesn't look like it's gone up as much in recent years, and that might look good. I want to caution you that that's not necessarily a, a good indicator, because in the past few years, as we've ramped up our utility construction, we've shifted some of our debt over to utility debt. We used to borrow ex, almost exclusively, geo-debt for everything, including utilities. We shifted that over. So our increase in overall debt is not reflected in this number, because this is just general obligation debt. So even though this is the, a metric, for us, we got to take a look at the utility debt as well. And our utility debt has gone up quite a bit.
Why, we may cover it later on, but I mean, I just look at these numbers, and it's like, there's us, and then Waukesha, and then Eau Claire, but then you look at Appleton, at, at thirty-three million compared to everyone else, where, you know, the lowest one, the next lowest is at seventy-four. Now, this is geo-debt.
Correct.
So Appleton may have, you know, because we have in the past put utility debt into our general obligation, they, Appleton, this is really a hard apples-to-apples comparison, correct, or?
No, I think you probably, Appleton's probably never used utility, or never used.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
They've never used geo-debt for utility.
Right, right, so that, that, that could be the explanation of why, i- if someone is just looking at this and going, oh my God, why is Oshkosh this? That that's, that's what needs to be pointed out, is, is that we, as you indicated, have used geo-debt for utilities in the past, rather than putting it as, as a utility-backed debt. Which you're still, you still have a debt, but it's.
The other issue is that we've been paying, we've been borrowing for things that, when we talk about a little later, that not everybody uses debt for that, they pay cash. And if, when you start putting things on a credit card, it can catch up. And that's what I want to get to later on, when we start talking about debt management, it's not just a matter of saying, we're going to limit ourselves to borrowing X amount of dollars. It's, what are we going to borrow for? Philosophically, what are we going to borrow for? Are we going to borrow for, for big-ticket items or ongoing expenses? And that's been one of our weaknesses over the years. That may be also a component of it, but I think for the most part, we have relied heavily on geo-debt, and now we're starting to rely less on geo-debt. And so even with all the work we've done, our debt has gone up minimally, but that's also a misleading thing. So I think you understand it intellectually, because we've had these discussions, but this is a, this statistic is lying a little bit, so be careful with it.
Mark, how is leasing? We've talked leasing, leasing a lot of equipment, rather than purchasing.
I don't believe it falls under your general obligation debt.
Yeah, I don't believe it does either. I wasn't sure if you had any other, it generally doesn't.
Sure.
But does it mask it? And we, Steve mentioned that last night to me, and it was, but does it mask it? And we've got to be cautious about that. We haven't done it a lot, but the one that we talked about last night was the, the golf course. I think that's a very effective use of leasing, because of the nature of the golf course. And I, and we've kicked around some other potential opportunities for that, that we may want to look at. There's other ones that I look and I say, I don't want to mask debt in a lease, because that could also be misleading. But I think you take a look at it a case-by-case basis, and take a look at it from a business standpoint. If leasing makes sense, we ought to, we ought to take a look at it.
There are also some advantages to leasing as far as maintenance. But there are a lot of cities that are used to that, would lease a lot of their equipment, all the refuse trucks, sewer cleaning equipment, that type of stuff.
And there are, and there are, a lot of the businesses now have that built in, into their business model, they'll not only, they'll create a separate agency just to, just to do that, yeah, they'll, they'll do that. But for us, where we are, percent of limit, we are very high in our percent of limit, that's sort of a, an offshoot of the overall geo-debt. This is debt per capita, our debt per capita and our cap, we're over seventy percent. Twenty twelve, we were seventy-three point three percent, we're going to talk about that a little later. Clearly, based on our peers, we are much, much higher. And that's, that's a legitimate issue that we have to talk about. Council already identified it as something in our strategic plan that was really in addition to what we've had in our strategic plan from before. So that's the historical data. So, as we are looking forward to 2015 budget, page nine gives you an idea of what assumptions we are putting in there for starters. Certainly, these are subject to change, but, you know, we're, we're working on all of these. Personnel costs, we are putting an assumption in on a two percent wage increase. That's based on what the CPI number is for, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. It's a number we're putting in there for assumption purposes. We can have a discussion about, is that too high, too low? But we have to be realistic about what our expectations are as we go through collective bargaining and, and market-based adjustments. That's the number we're putting in. Not asking for approval or disapproval, just understand that's where we're, we're coming from. We've, are we, we have some figures to kind of show what that impact is, because that's, I want to get into a little bit, a little later, so we'll show you some impact numbers, we'll walk you through them. You can take them with you tonight, just to get an idea of, of where those are. Health insurance, you'll remember that in 2014, we had a twenty percent increase in premiums, and we're up to a twelve percent employee premium share for all employees, all employee groups are paying twelve percent. Right now, we are estimating, projecting a twelve percent increase in health insurance costs. That is based on very preliminary data. What our insurance consultant does for us is they take a look at a twelve-month window, the most recent twelve months, which is July one of last year to June thirtieth of this year. Half of that year was under our old plan, and half of it's under our new plan. Half of it was under a different set of assumptions with respect to employees. We talked about how many employees are over that $75,000 threshold. The average for our group is four to five. We've been going nine to twelve people, double that amount, so we've really been paying out. Right now, we're at about the four to five level. There are a few more people that could go over that as time goes on, but it's starting to normalize.
That's a normal rate.
Yes.
About four a year, four to five.
So we're, it looks like we may be a little more on the normal side this year, but it's still early. But, you know, we talked about that in terms of how that impacts our budgets, when you have people who are over 75,000, the reinsurer starts taking a look at that, they want to assume less risk, so they require us to assume more risk, and there's something called a laser. We don't get them very often, but typically, it's not surprising if we get one laser a year. You get two or three lasers, that means now, instead of covering up the first seventy-five, we cover up the first 200,000 per employee, or per life. It's not just employee, it's also dependents. So if you get three lasers compared to one, you're looking at another, you know, $300,000 that you're assuming in costs. So those are things that we keep an eye on. Fortunately, it looks to be a little better, but again, we're using six years of, six months of last year's data and six months of this year's data.
And how far into the budget process do you estimate roughly, before that becomes a more of a concrete number than an estimate?
Every month, we're going to do this, until we got nine months. I can't go any more than nine. Actually, it's going to be more like eight. We're going to take a look at August numbers, but it's, it's looking good.
Now, does municipal insurance for our employees like this, how, how affected is the National Healthcare Plan, or what just came out yesterday? There was a ruling on some of the exchanges and stuff. Does that affect our rates at all?
I'd say in the short run, no. Long term, it's, it's hard to say, but in the short run, no. Is that a fair statement?
I think so. I think, you know, in a, in a more extended way, you know, what we're seeing is, sometimes people have the opportunity to leave our plan and go to the exchange. And if those employees that leave our plan are healthy, then we retain more of the unhealthy employees, and then that kind of has a, it really has a compounding effect two ways. Number one, you know, we have more costs. And then number two, we have less people on the plan, so we have less revenue that we're generating. So that's something that is kind of a, a latent effect of Affordable Care Act. We talked a little bit about that.
How are we losing, where are we losing people? How are we losing them? Why are we losing them?
We're trying to track that and keep.
And that's tough.
Handle on that, but it's, it's tough.
You'll, well, no, you, you won't recall this one. When we put together the budget for this year in September of 2013, we assumed we were going to have 583 employees slash retirees in our plan. So we're relying, as a business model, we're relying on 583 customers. Some are on single plan, dual, family plan. The number's what's, Sue, five, sixty? So it was twenty less than what we thought. So we lost twenty customers. So the question that, that Fitz is raising is, well, did we lose, for lack of a better term, healthy customers or unhealthy customers? We lose unhealthy customers, that's good for our business model. If we lose healthy customers, those are folks that are paying into the plan and not taking much out of it. So we talked about that with our health insurance during our workshop. That's the type of stuff that we, we're still trying to get a better handle, and, and some of it is, some of it is projections. To be conservative, the number we're putting in here to represent this twelve percent increase is we're going to get, we're going to be down to 540 employees. So we, that's the number we're assuming. Now, if we don't lose as many employees, because maybe we've had enough people divert themselves out of the plan already, then that's good. But if we're, if, we guessed from five, sixty-three, and what's our current count, Sue?
Right now, we're at about five fifty-three.
Five fifty-three, so if we get down, so we are estimating that we're going to go from five fifty-three to five forty. I would love to be wrong, but we've got to be conservative, at least for the starters. As time goes on, depending on what the council does with, with the budget, depending on how many employees are in and out of the plan, positions eliminated. Hate to bring those issues up now, but when you eliminate positions, you're eliminating the, the number of customers our, our health insurance business has. Retirees, are they getting steered towards the exchange? Because it's like, I'm healthy enough, I can take the risk, I'm going over to the exchange. The exchange is riskier than us, but we're more costly than the exchange. Because why? Because there's a lot more deductibles over there, there's other things. So if they take that risk and they're healthy, then we've lost a good customer. If they go to the exchange and they're unhealthy, we've probably lost a bad customer that was probably good for us. It's those types of things. We don't know all those details. When somebody says, I'm leaving, we don't necessarily know that that person represents a healthy group of people or an unhealthy group of people, but the last few years, our theory is that we've been losing healthy people.
And we were talking a little bit more about it earlier today, and it's, you know, Mark's right, it is difficult to try to assess. I mean, ultimately, we think that, you know, it will stabilize, but it's, it's kind of like looking down a well and not being able to see the bottom as clearly as we would like to. So we'll get to a point where that exodus will slow down, but we just don't know where it is. And Mark makes a good point, too, to be cognizant of, the more staff that we remove, like through potential staff reductions.
Right. And also just, just turnover. I think we talked last year, the age of our staff, and as, as, as the retirees come out, we replace with younger, that might be more healthier.
Right. So if we, if we lose positions through attrition, for example, we're, we may be losing some employees, but we're not gaining younger, healthier employees, so our age group goes up a little more, our average age group goes up a little more, and I'm one of those, so you know what happens, at, at this age, things start falling apart. And that's just the reality. There's more preventive type of care that's given. It just goes, goes with the territory.
And I think, you know, we talked quite a bit about it at the healthcare workshop, too, the health insurance. the health insurance workshop. And I think that's why a strategy associated with trying to focus on wellness, I think, is a wise one long-term. If we know that we're going to get to that threshold at some point, and maybe those are, let's just, worst-case scenario, say those are our least healthy, or all of our healthy employees have left, then what is our strategy to focus on the remaining employees? And I think it's important for us to try to understand that wellness is something to focus on, to try to affect those remaining employees.
So we're going through the budget, and I was teasing Sue a little bit today because it's like, can I afford to put money in the wellness program? Well, after the last workshop, the answer is, we can't afford not to put money in the wellness program. We have a ten million dollar plus health insurance program. We got to invest, you know, if we invest, I just throw out a number, fifty thousand dollars for wellness, we, all we need to do is prove that we're going to get a return on our investment, and that's money well spent. But we've got to turn the table, and wellness, that seems to be the new thing. That it's getting your employees healthier, more aware of what they're doing, and showing the economics, not just in terms of what we're going to hit you on co-pays and stuff. It's, you know, how much longer are you going to be able to work if you're not healthy? How much are you going to be able to live if you're not healthy? I mean, all those things go in there.
Fitz, you, you've talked to other communities, as well as private employers. I think Mercury has had a program for a long time. What kind of a payback are they, are the numbers that they're giving you?
For wellness, Steve, or?
You want Sue to do that?
Clinic stuff?
Who's been looking at that stuff?
Well, both of us have. Go ahead, Sue.
It's averaged like three to one. There's other studies that are as high as seven, ten to one.
All right.
So depends on what type of program you put together.
Right, right. And, and the whole idea behind wellness is it's more to focus on the chronics, which are blood pressure, cholesterol, glucose, which is diabetes. Because those are the things that really drive a lot of your costs in healthcare, is managing chronic illnesses. Wellness programs, while yes, you can talk about diet and all of the other things that may have an impact on cancer, your wellness programs are more focused on the chronic and the things that you can, through small changes in lifestyle, get people to address them. If you can get someone off of a statin or a blood pressure medicine, or get their blood glucose down so they don't have to, you know, manage diabetes, that's where you get a lot of your, your bang for the buck out of those.
There, and even the people that are in the pre-stages. If you've got someone pre-hypertension, pre-diabetic, you want to nip those people right away so that they don't get into the medication, and, you know, then the costs start to escalate.
And I think, you know, both those are excellent points, and I think that ties back to the dialogue that Mark had earlier about, you know, our concern with some of the shock losses that exceed our threshold. If we can intervene and they can change their lifestyle before they get to a point where they have a heart attack or have some serious catastrophic health condition, then we can avoid those stop losses that we talked about earlier. So it really is all interconnected. Certainly, some things are going to happen, and we can't prevent that. But this is, if we can prevent a few of those, those are, those are just a few that we won't have to deal with in the, in the stop loss, shock loss world that Mark talked about.
We treat smokers differently than non-smokers, correct?
In terms of, we don't have premiums that are based on biometric outcomes at this point. We have a health risk assessment, and by gathering that information, we develop programming to try to reduce it. But we don't have a full outcomes-based biometric program. That's what I think you're talking about, Steve.
We talked about that a little bit at the workshop, and we're not there yet, but that is a coming thing where it's, depending on your other habits, you know, weight, and, you know, it's not that you got to lose X number of pounds, it's you got to lose X percent in order to, to work towards improving that. Smoking, body mass index, glucose, there are things that, that other employers are doing. We're not there yet, and I think, I think that's where the wellness program comes in. Let's just see what kind of results we can get. And then do we overlay biometrics into that?
I think Sue has, Sue has done a little bit of work with the committee on that. I know she's done some research. But I think, you know, last year, if you recall, when we were dealing with that large increase, and Mark tasked the committee to take a look at, what can we do to keep the costs down? I think the committee was very much in agreement that if you pay more, or if you use more, you should pay more. That was a theme that the employees really believed in.
Right, and that's why we changed from the deductible to the co-pay. So every time you go to the doctor, you're paying a co-pay, so therefore, you use more, you should pay more.
But that, that point you're making, Steve, is right in line with that same sort of philosophy.
I mean, it's like, it's like, it's like your car insurance. If you have a lot of accidents, your, your rate goes up. It's based on, it's based on the actuarial risk. And certain of these conditions, smoking, overweight, those all have a higher actuarial, actuarial risk to health complications.
And I think, you know, before maybe we can get to a full biometric program, if we can enhance our wellness and try to improve everybody's health in advance of that, I think that's something that the employees would appreciate, too.
But again, it's getting people involved in the assessments and requiring the assessments, so you got your baselines, and then getting people involved in the wellness program. Because some of those who are probably going to be your biggest risk people are going to be the people who are going to be the most reluctant to do it, because historically, they haven't taken care of themselves.
They don't want to know the truth.
They're, they're less likely until you provide them with either a positive incentive or a negative incentive, which are.
It's challenging.
Lower costs.
Yeah. It's challenging to.
It's a positive.
Is, is there going to be anything in this budget or in the insurance side about the clinics that you've been talking about with the city, I mean, with the city, county, and school district?
We are not making any assumption that we're moving to the clinic or not moving to the clinic. There'll be a shift of resources, but if we, if we decide to go to the clinic, we'll shift to the clinic within our own resources. We're going to budget for no additional costs. We'll just absorb it in whatever we do. The idea is, we want to achieve the savings sufficient to pay for it. That may be difficult in the first year, but again, what we are doing, to kind of get to your question, the, the twelve percent is also assuming that we're still going to have a surcharge that's going to go into the fund. Fund balance-wise, I hope I can maybe transition and not, not dodge your answer, not dodge your question. The surcharge is working. Right now, we're up about three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the year, and I think that's almost exclusively due to the surcharge. But there's a little bit of experience. I mean, there, but it's too early to tell. But we're up three hundred fifty thousand dollars, isn't that right? Is it, or is it more than that now? You were running some tabs on that.
Right now, as of through the end of June, it was about three hundred and twenty-three thousand.
And what Mark's talking about is just rebuilding our reserve.
We want to get up to about two and a half million. We were at one point one, and the idea is a rolling two-year improvement. So we were trying to get seven hundred thousand. We're up three twenty-three. So that's for six months. Are we there? Are we halfway there? We'll find out. A lot of that is, the surcharge is working, and that's a hundred five dollar surcharge per employee per month. That's built into the rates. We are projecting that next year's surcharge, because we believe that we'll be up to about a million and a half. And we're just conservatively estimating that. If we're at a million and a half, again, a rolling two-year to get to our two and a half goal, now we only need to go a million, so we only get a half million, in which case, we're going down to seventy-seven dollars. So the, the, the surcharge is going to go down. And if we get everything we want, in two years, we'll be back to two and a half million. If we do better, we'll get it up quicker, and then sixteen, we can drop it even lower. Ideally, we want to get the surcharge down to zero, but we got to get rebounding. And the fairness issue, and Sue and I were debating the various methodologies and how we do that, I believe that the surcharge has to be per employee, regardless if you're a single family, because that's, that's a surcharge per employee. You can change from single to family, just like that. You just walk in and say, here's, here's my paperwork, I'm going to the family plan. You benefit regardless of what plan you get. So we're doing the surcharge on a per-employee basis, not on it's more for the family or less for the family. But all we're trying to do is get our surcharge back up. We want to get our surcharge down to zero. And then, when it gets down to zero, then everybody's benefiting from that.
That's per employee in the plan, or is that per employee on the org chart?
Per employee in the plan. Everybody's paying that.
So if we're losing, again, though, but if we're losing employees on the plan, we're losing some of the surcharge.
Correct.
Right. So, you know, we know we won't, we were hoping to get like six hundred ninety-six thousand on the surcharge. If you, if the surplus so far to date is exclusively due to the surcharge, and you just double it, we're about six hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'm guessing some of that has to be because of, because of some of the other numbers, that our, our shock losses are down and things like that. Plus, with the numbers down, as Sue mentioned, we're not going to get six ninety-six in our surcharge. It's going to be about five percent less. That's okay. We're moving in the right direction, and that's, that's all we want to do. All we want to do is get a soft landing to two and a half million. And once we get to two and a half million, the surcharge goes away, and then we're just back managing it on a yearly basis. As long as we don't go too low, we're okay. As we go too high, we can lower rates, but we want to manage that. Steve, did I answer your question, or do I need to?
I can maybe piggyback on that. I think, Steve, you're exactly right. The point you're trying to make is, when I, I was saying, before we get to biometrics, we like want to provide resources for employees to.
Right.
Work on wellness. The clinic could be a resource.
Yeah, if we're doing, you know, if we're doing a clinic, do we have to consider that in the budget this year?
We, we will build it, it will, we will incorporate it into the budget. We will live within our means. We will not increase or decrease the 2015 budget.
So we don't have to put like a line item budget for the clinic, per se?
No.
Based on, we might have it six months into the budget. We, we can cover it with what we have in our insurance surplus.
I believe we can.
Okay.
And it's not in any of these numbers, right?
This point, yeah, right.
But we, yeah, so.
We discussed it, we had a workshop on it. I know, I kind of call a little bit of discussion. It sounds like the school district's a little ahead of us, wanting to move it forward, and...
School district is very interested in it. We just had a meeting this afternoon with our employees. We need to get it out a little more. We've talked to council a little bit about it, and I would say that the council has been talked to about it probably three times more than the employees. So we, and the whole key to success with this is usage. So if we don't get the employees on board with this thing, it doesn't matter if we love it.
And Mark, I didn't have an opportunity to attend the meeting, but Mark was just telling me a little bit this afternoon, and, you know, we want the employees to understand that this is something that we're trying to provide for them as an option for them, and it'll also positively impact our costs. So we need to make sure that they're aware of all the benefits as, as we are. So we want to do a good job with it, so they feel comfortable with it.
We want to demystify it. I mean, there were, there were some really interesting misconceptions. I mean, we were joking about, well, people think that Brian Chapman's going to be running a clinic, and it's going to be in the, in the employee lunchroom. I mean, there were some concerns that it was like, oh, an employee clinic is just something you go into, go into this office, and we're going to, we're going to throw up an examination table out there.
Brian's a talented guy, but there are limits.
There are limits.
I get it.
So, but, but once we knew that those are some of the misconceptions, and I'm being, I'm being facetious in some of that, but there were some genuine misconceptions. The, if we don't get the employees on board with this thing, we can't recommend it to you.
Is this employees and their family?
Yes. And that, 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 those questions come up, but, you know, if you've got an employee who lives in, just say, Appleton, are they going to use it for their kids? Will they use it for themselves? Yeah, probably, because it's convenient while they're at, at work. But are they going to bring their kids down? Well, it depends. What are we, what are we making, or what's our, what's the carrot we're throwing out there for that? Do you get lesser costs? Do you get, are you able to get there with minimal wait time? Those are the, and the employees are just now learning that. The answer is, yeah, you get a lot better, you get a lot better service.
And we talked about what sorts of services we provide. We have an idea of what we think would be helpful. We want to hear from the employees, too, and what they think will be helpful. We, we've looked at a variety of different models. Some include the ability to dispense medication right there, and those seem to be very popular. We did get a chance to go and tour the West Bend School District. They have a phenomenal operation down there, and that's one of the models that they have where, and it's a matter of convenience, where a mom can bring in their sick child, they get treated right there, give them the, the medication so they can start working on getting better right away. And that's something that their employees really like, and it's a very popular feature. So, you know, things like that, that we can talk about to see if they feel comfortable with it, because as Mark said, if they don't go to the clinic, it's not going to be helpful for us.
Would that clinic be only open to those employees who are in the plan?
Yes. Yeah, just, it's just, you got to be getting your health insurance from us. That's, that's part of your health insurance plan.
Always really design the program.
Yeah, they got to tell us what they want and tell us what they're going to use. And that's the key, what they're going to use. I don't want somebody just, you know, blowing smoke, saying, oh, yeah, I'll use it and never use it. Are you going to use it? What are you going to use it for? What do you, what features do you want?
You would amend that as you get into these clinics? Can you change your services that you're providing as the needs arise or decrease?
That's the beauty of it, yeah. And, and, and we've got to convince employees that we will be responsive, because if we can't sell it to them like that, like that question, people are going to say, I'm not taking the chances. There's.
And as it becomes more and more utilized, there may be more and more of a need. Some clinics have been able to add, like, for example, chiropractic is an option, and that's been very popular. But to do that right away, when we don't know what sort of participation might exist?
Are you looking at doing like a survey on the employees, more than just, I know you had the workshop with, you know, or had the insurance group, but more like a survey?
Sue can answer that question, because I walked out.
We are. What came out of the focus group meeting, they want to get more information. So what we're going to do is contact the clinics, our consultant is contact the clinics that are already open, find out what they've done for employee information, employee education, summarize that, get it out to the employees, and then regroup with the focus group, and then put together a survey for employees. And, you know, one of the questions would be, what type of services would you use at the clinic? What type of hours, you know, those types of things.
Another thing we talked about, too, you know, we had the benefit, just a small group to, as I mentioned, tour some clinics, but we thought maybe the group, that they might benefit from seeing actually how it works, too. So maybe a field trip for the committee, too, so they can, you know, have a better feel for how it works, might, might be helpful, too. So.
Any more questions on health insurance? We want to walk through a few more items. Some are relatively easy. Income continuation insurance, for the last two years, we've actually had a premium holiday. It's not a significant amount of money, but we are assuming that the premium holiday is going to go away, because that, that fund has been doing well from our insurer, but we always, we, we want a plan that we're going to get charged for that. Life insurance, a one percent increase in rates. Typically, those are based on salary, so you always have to watch that, because it's not just, it's only a one percent increase. It's, it's, the, the rate goes up one percent, but the rate is based on your salary. If your salary goes up two percent and the rate goes up one percent, that's really three percent. So those are the things we, we keep an eye on. The rate is looking at going up one percent. Speaking of rates, now, finally, we get to some good news. I actually, I'm pleased to report that I misspoke at, at a meeting when we were doing the changeover to pay off the WRS debt, I said zero point two. That's actually the decrease that statewide is happening. Our decrease for prior service credit is actually one point four percent. So our overall WRS rate, and I'll just focus on the employer's share for general employees, because it just makes the math easier. As you'll see, it says retirement about halfway down the page, says general employees, and for 2015, employer's share, six point eight percent. The rate before we paid it off was eight point four percent. So you can see a one point six percent reduction in our rate for WRS.
I just asked a question there, because I've got to come to understand this. The reason we get the rate decrease is because we paid it off. In essence, didn't we simply move that at a better price to debt? Didn't we move it from a personnel cost to debt?
Yes, we did.
Because we still have the obligation. So really, there'll be a portion of our debt which is really personnel costs that really has to flow back in to really measure your personnel costs. Otherwise, you're doing what you said before. You're throwing things into debt that should be in the operational cost.
That should have been, I believe that's.
Conceptually, am I wrong there? Because this is kind of a false savings. Because we've just transferred the debt somewhere else and increased our debt problem.
I would.
Because we'll still have to make payments each year, just like we were making payments here. But we'll pay them out of some, we won't pay them out of an employee cost.
They did not, they did not magically disappear, number one. Number two.
Those have to flow back in here to measure, really measure what our personnel costs are.
The analysis that we conducted before the council approved, assuming that debt, that is there, it's legit, and that's the number you need to look at. When we say we are going to save several hundred thousand dollars annually, that savings has to go against this. And you legitimately can do that, that's appropriate. But this is the good news side of the equation. The bad news side is, it's now into debt. And we're going to get into debt and talk about how we manage that as.
So in essence, we've transferred some personnel costs to the debt side of the equation, take them out of personnel.
I think it was unfairly.
I, I think it's, I'm not.
Characterized.
Whether it was a, a good, it was a good idea, because it's going to save us most and we're going to have less each year. But in some ways, this, this decrease is a false decrease.
Those, I mean, wasn't it true, though, that those, those costs that we were covering that in the debt, that was an unfunded liability? That was for past, previous employees?
Right.
This is for current employees?
Yeah. Semantically.
Current employees were paying that before.
No, they, well, the employer was paying it. It was a function of the number of employees. And part of the reason that number kept going up is that our, as our number of employees shrink, again, the denominator shrinks, so we're paying less. If we expected five, if we expected 600 employees paying into the plan, and we only had 560, we lost 40 employees, and therefore, our IOU from the state just keeps getting ratcheted up. And it's being assessed based on current employees, rather than, it was really a debt that, that got incurred decades ago.
Right.
And we just never paid it off.
And should, but should it have been based on how many employees at the time of that?
That was.
Because back then, we had, let's just say, we had 400 employees. Well, the city grew from 40,000 people to 66,000, and at that rate, for sure, you're going to have more employees.
You're right, but I, but because we, because WRS was kind of a loner, the way for us to, the way that they gather money from us is on our employees, our employee count. So they just kind of tacked it on the bill.
Take the screw and tighten it a little more.
In terms of trying to simplify how they collected it.
So.
You know, I was wondering, why, now, why does the employee share go down slightly from about 14,000?
That 0.2 that I said was our reduction statewide, that reduction is 2.2 on the employer's side, 0.2 on the employee's side. So that's why it's going down from seven to 6.8% for the employees. They're getting a reduction, we're getting a reduction. We're getting the added reduction of 1.4. That is all to the benefit of the employer, because we were paying that tab. Now it's been shifted to debt service, but it's, but that doesn't, the employee does not get any benefit from that, because we were paying that whole tab.
And to add to Mark's point, too, Councilmember Fitzgerald, I think, that's really, I think, a separate issue as it relates to the health of the WRS fund. So we had our prior service obligation that we paid for, that we were just talking about, that we borrowed for and are paying for. But we talked about it in a previous session, where Wisconsin Retirement System very carefully tries to look at the economy and adjust the rates accordingly. And they have what they call a smoothing out period when the recession occurred. So we, and if you have people that you know that participate as retirees, you know, felt the, the pinch of that adjustment that Wisconsin Retirement System did. And I think because the economy is getting a little bit better, those rates have been adjusted. And also, those folks that are retirees, their pensions may not be, continue to be reduced as a result of that. So it's, it's kind of a recession-related issue.
The five years that they use are 2013, 12, 11, 10, and nine. So now, 2008 is no longer in the formula. That's, thank God.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Because I was affected by it.
Those folks that are retirees know, I think, exactly what I'm talking about.
So you're, you're going to see that the smoothing effect that the WRS builds in, 0.2% this year, we could see another decrease again. But again, it all depends on that five-year window that they, they look at and say, okay, we're doing nine through 13. Nine through 13, a lot better than eight through 12. And that's what's done, so.
But I think, you know.
But to the mayor's point, we're, we're, we're actually going to save some money this year in the budget for what we pay for the employer's share.
And we're going to summarize this in a moment.
We're going to save some money, but.
But you're right. It's on the debt side now, and we still have to pay that off, but overall.
It'll be a smaller payment for us.
Right. But we're going to save some money.
And I think, Trina, what did your estimate, over the course of time, it's what, 14 million, something?
It was, I believe, 14 million compared to if we continued to pay our payments versus if we took out a state trust fund loan. We were still going to owe.
16 million.
16 million if we continued to just pay via the WRS system.
30, 30, or whatever it was. It was a good financial decision by the council.
So there's a, a formula, it's called prior service. The prior service portion that's entirely employer's responsibility, that 1.4% evaporates. Now, it evaporates on this sheet, but gets shifted over to, to debt service. So we're just talking about the personnel side right now. So that's going down. So that, so overall, that's a 1.6% decrease. And, and it, you can see the, the other effects with protective, police, and fire. And then, yes, the employee's share is also going down. That won't show up on our books. That's just the employee's paycheck, that little 0.2 will, will be a nice little benefit. So that's the number that we're doing. Now, to sum that up, Sue, do you have the summary sheet? The, the big summary sheet that you can pass out to council?
Another question in terms of just what's included.
Why don't you pass it around to.
What about the pay for performance and across the board?
We're going to answer that question in just a moment.
It's not on, not on here.
Correct. What we are assuming is there's no change in pay for performance. We are still assuming the same across the, across the city, 150,000 to that program. So the good news there is that the, that program will see a 0% change dollar-wise. So what we have here, 1% was almost misleading for the reasons I think the mayor stated. Because, say, what 1% is going to cost us is misleading because of the shift to debt service. So it's, it's still, using the mayor's definition, it's still misleading, but I want to do the, I want to walk you through it. This big spreadsheet gets into all the details. What I asked Sue and Trina to do was to, can you just summarize it and make sure that you can point to these numbers on this sheet? So there's a number that shows the wages itself, and there are components. The mayor asked, what about paper performance? In the past, Burke, you've asked about steps. This spreadsheet has all that in there. These are the increases due to steps. These are the increases due to, across the board. And then paper performance, it just shows you that it's going to be no change. So it's 0% increase on that line item. But steps, if we had it as a separate line item, Trina's going to help me, it's steps.
The, right here.
89,000, so almost $90,000 of a, of a 2% increase is due to steps. So for 2%, the overall cost of the general fund would be $341,000. That includes wages, WRS, FICA, does not include health insurance. And to make the analysis just simpler, it did not include overtime. Now, overtime.
What are we looking at on here?
On the summary sheet.
The, the summary sheet here, that 341,000 represents an overall, for a 2% wage increase, with all the other components added together, the net increase is $341,000. What that number represents is, that is the levy impact. Levy impact for wages and wage-related benefits alone. WRS, FICA, et cetera. I thought that would be simpler. You can see this $341,000 number somewhere in this sheet. Trina, Sue, can you help me just to show them where it's at? Or is it just the 685?
It's a 685, so the subtotal of the wages, and then you want to subtract the savings and the benefits, and that gives you the 341.
So you can see that $344,000, budget to budget, is what you're going to see is savings in the general fund as a result of everything that's been going on, primarily WRS. Wages, a total of $685,000 increase, of which.
John, I can help you, or they should forget those?
Please do, yes, thank you for rescuing me.
So if you go midway down the page in the general fund, general fund supported, total general fund and general fund supported across the board. If you look under 2015, if you take the $489,079.12 plus, then you need to go down to the next line, the steps, add $89,917.14.
They're bolded, if you can see that.
Yep. And then go down to the next line, the next column over, and you need to add in the pay for performance, the $106,900. Those total the $685,896. So the difference between 2014 and 2015 is taking the 2014 base, increasing the base by 2%, and then also adding in the, the 2%, the steps, and the pay for performance.
If I could just provide a, a small commercial here. This is a project that took a lot of time. And one of the things I know that City Manager Roloff has mentioned to you, as a potential cost item going forward, is going to be an ERP system. And that's something that we can use to help project some of these numbers.
Accounting system.
I'm sorry to use the acronym, so, but that's something that you'll see as part of the budget going forward. It'll tie all of our accounting systems together, including payroll and HR in sync with accounting. A lot of our systems are reaching the end of their useful life. So it's something that we really would like to work on as a team.
Hey, this cover, both, are unionized and non-unionized people?
Yes. If you look at the, the details, we broke it out, because depending on how you want to slice it and dice it, we've got non-reps, fire, police, and.
Yep, I see it now.
It says general fund supported. You don't see transit specifically mentioned in here, because they're part of general fund supported. So we want to make sure that even though they're not part of the general fund formally, they really are. And so we have it in there for general fund supported.
And this really makes no assumptions. We haven't talked to the council about any parameters related to collective bargaining or anything like that. As Mark said, we use the CPIU from the Bureau of Labor Statistics as an assumption number.
That being said, John, do we have any contracts coming up for?
All of our contracts will be expired at the end of this year. So we have police, fire, and the police-fire suits, and the transit employees.
Retroactive and the last one. I couldn't remember what, how long they were.
We lose, we lose track.
Transit, too, isn't corporate, is.
Yep, yep. We've had some preliminary dialogue with, with some of the folks. Typically, with the way the bargaining cycle works is, because there are oftentimes all kinds of different team members that are part of the collective bargaining team, it's most efficient to start it after everybody's done with all their summer vacations, the kids are back to school, so the team members don't miss, and it just works out a lot better that way. So that'll be an upcoming project that we'll be working on and talking to the council upon.
Burke, to your point, the 344,000, on the summary sheet, the 344,000, 7/8 of that is due to the refinancing of the WRS debt. So that's savings that is really a shift. 1/8 of that is the, the actual decrease that we're all enjoying statewide for, for WRS rates going down. So, you know, 1/8 of that, so roughly a little over 40,000, is due to rates going down. The remaining 320,000 or so is, is a shift. So you can see that, you know, so we felt it was appropriate to show you all the components. I know, you know, Burke's always been interested in, tell me the step impact. Tell me that impact, tell me this impact. So it's 1.19, but again, there is, that's, there's a misleading number there, because the WRS is going down significantly. So factor that all in, and, and we'll keep slicing and dicing it as time goes on. If you have any more questions or want us to analyze any of this stuff in any other way, please let us know. I've been driving Trina and Sue crazy enough, you're welcome to join me in driving them crazy with more questions. I think they'll enjoy somebody else bugging them rather than me. How's that? Am I paying you back for bugging you all day? All right, good.
I think, you know, one of the, the big tails that this spreadsheet tells when you look at the bottom line is that the, in the actual, the actual wage increase, the actual payroll increase is, is in excess of 3%. And even though, you know, as council, we approved 2% salary increase, I mean, there are other costs, and I think employees recognize that there's other costs associated with being an employer when you're paying Medicare in addition to WRS, in addition to health insurance. And this, this doesn't even include health insurance contributions here, but, but this is more than a 3% increase. I'm not sure this proposal.
Yes, and when you add health insurance, which is, for lack of a, a round number, a million dollars on top of three, you know, 341, that is, you know, you're getting three, even, you know, up towards a 4%, depending on where.
It was close to four.
Yeah, when you're looking at overall compensation, it is that number. So that, I mean, we can slice and dice it plenty of different ways, but I know, I'm hoping that, as confusing as the spreadsheet looks, the idea was to show you that we are looking at the different components. They do work together. You can't just look at one. You got to look at the big picture. And we've shown you the components of the picture, but the 341 is based on an estimated 2%. But you got to throw the extra million in for health insurance. Until we have a better number, it's going to be a million-dollar increase. So that's a lot on the personnel side. We are going to talk about debt in there, in the limited time we have left. But any other questions on that? Or did we, did we reasonably cover that for you, for, for starters?
No, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to.
You're good?
To keep track of the, the compensations, one of my, my long-term concerns has been a shift. If revenues are flat, and personnel costs are going up roughly 4% a year, that's coming out of non-personnel. So there's that much less money left, or it's got to come out of a rather significant tax increase.
Right. And then, and the dilemma is, yeah, and as you've mentioned in the past, the more personnel becomes a bigger portion, there's, you can't just cut the non-personnel side forever, because we keep cutting it and cutting it. If our personnel percentage of the pie keeps growing and growing, eventually, it's going to be that. And that's, that's where it gets really tough for you guys.
Less money available for debt service, less money available for equipment, less money available away for.
Right. And your point is, when you make those reductions, then, then you really have nothing left to look at, other than personnel, and I think.
Well, not only that, it's an annuity. You're dealing with annuities, not one, or costs, not one year. Every time you deal with annuities, that's a different, well, on forever.
Meanwhile, I don't want to dwell a lot, even though it's a lot of pages. We got a little history in terms of, we're, we're projecting 1% increase for gas, 6% increase for electric. You know, the, the cumulative effect of losing a nuclear power plant is roosting in these numbers. And as Point Beach closes, out-of-state power purchases go up. That, so that 6% is something that we've got from WPS, and you can take that to the bank. Diesel fuel, we guessed pretty good. I'm still going to keep my day job and not get into commodities projections, but we did pretty well on those numbers. We're a little under on the average. Ask me that after August, because now we're starting, we've, the crest has passed on the fuel costs. They're going to go down until Labor Day. But you know that goes on. We're projecting, we haven't put. We're projecting, we haven't put a number in for 15 yet, but we're doing okay. We did pretty well. CNG, we guessed pretty well, although right now, the price of CNG has been above $1.78, but it's trending down as well. You can see solid waste as well, the amount we're estimating per ton. So those are some of the big number projections we're having. You saw the salt number a few weeks ago. It's not in here, but you saw it. That number went up quite a bit, and we hope that Mother Nature's kind to us. That's about all we can do at this point. So those are the overall projections that we've gotten so far. The mayor has historically asked the question about percentage of personnel costs part of the budget. That's in here. It's ranged over, since 2007, between 73.66, which was last year, to a high of 76.44 in 2008. That number's been going down and then up and then down. It's 74.35%, roughly three-quarters of our budget. Again, to the mayor's point, if we keep cutting on the non-personnel side, there's only going to be one thing left to cut after all is said and done, and that's going to be personnel. It's just more of a statistical acknowledgement that that's where we are.
Or you have to raise taxes considerably to do it, because we had one of the biggest tax raises last year that we've had. That's one reason why the percentage came down. We hadn't raised that. We had 4.9% last year, which is probably double what we've been doing, so.
Mr. Gray reminded us of that, so.
No, what I mean is that if you, that's another way to chase the thing down.
It is.
You can chase the percentage down by bringing in more revenue taxation.
So those are...
Balance those things.
So I think we covered all of the, on the expenditure side, the status of the health insurance fund. I think I went over that pretty well already, so I won't repeat that. Are there any questions on expenditures out before we get to debt? I won't completely check off everything, but do we have the debt sheets to pass around? This is maybe close to what the council was asking for with respect to goal, but it doesn't fill in the blanks of how we do it. This is, as I said to you last night, this is really nothing more than a spreadsheet that Trina's been working on, and she refined it a little more based on our discussions. Originally, the council's goal was giving a three, give a three-to-five-year projection on reducing our debt to 70%. What Finance Director Larson did was, we did a projection based just what it would take, we thought, over a 10-year period. And we plugged in $11.4 million on principal debt taken on. So let me orient you now that everybody has a sheet. I was stalling a little bit. We have principal debt retired, what we're planning to retire in debt, what principal of debt we're taking on, showing you our balance, and then over on the far right side is percentage of debt limit used. You know, we've ramped up the last few years. It is spiking in 2014 because the WRS debt is included in there. If you take a look at the footnotes, skip over the first star, the double star, the two asterisks, includes 6.1 million in GEO bonds that we're projecting we're going to borrow this year, two point, a little over 2.8 million in GEO notes, and then the 10 million plus for the payoff of our unfunded liability. So with that in there now, we are currently at 78.48%. You saw how we spiked. And that was, that was, once we made the decision to do it, we knew that number was going to go up. So based on our $11.4 million, we actually would get below 70% in six years. But even with that, it doesn't mean we've, you know, we're home free on 70% because we're still hugging 70%. It's just slightly under. And the reason is because you'll see it go under, go under a little more, and then go back up. And that's because we're starting to, as some of this debt gets retired, 11.4 actually is greater on the last few years of the analysis. So right now, we're retiring 13-plus million dollars. By 2018, it'll be 14-plus million. And we're projecting at 11.4 million, we can get you there in six years with the WRS debt in there. Now, this is the easy part, because all we did was do, give you a spreadsheet.
But also, you just got to look and compare that 11.4 to the years above it, to the debt taken on each year to know what the task will be.
It is monumental.
They have to change our behaviors.
Fortunately, the 19 million that we show reflects the 10 million for the...
I understand.
WRS. So I think we've started to turn that corner, but we're going to have to continue that behavior in order to achieve this.
What was it, what was it in 2010 that caused for 34 million, 34.5 million in principal taken on?
We also retired a great deal of debt. That was a refinancing with a lot of, so you can see, we retired almost as much as we took on. The net increase, increase from the previous year, it doesn't look as bad.
For interest rate reduction, right, Mark?
Yeah, it was all interest rate reduction. So statistically, we took on more debt, but we also paid a lot off. But the net increase was still $2.3 million. That's the real number to look at. And you can see in that column, it's about halfway across, increase from previous year. The one that Mr. Peck points out is, it was still a $2.3 million increase, even with a big refinancing. And we were taking advantage of really, really low rates that were available at that time. So we refinanced our mortgages. And it was, it was a very prudent move, but we still had a net increase. And it was a net increase of 1.6, a net increase of 4.2. Now, with, this year, with a net increase of 6 million, that includes WRS. If we hadn't redone the WRS, it would have been, it would have been negative 3 to 4 million dollars. That's the type of restraint we're going to need to continue to exercise in order to make this happen. This doesn't mean we've accomplished it. This just means this is what it's going to take for us to get to 70%. It's doable, but there's certain things we're going to have to look at.
How does the city garage figure into these numbers right now?
The last installment...
Which years are we going to pay on this?
The, let me answer first. The debt we're taking on for the garage ends in 2014, excuse me, 2015. So of the 11.4 million in 2015, 4 millions for the city garage. So we're $7.4 million in other debt that we can assume. That's everything. Two things I want to point out, two of the asterisks that Trina put together. First off, going back to one of the first items an hour and a half ago, the single asterisk, we are not making any assumption on increase in equalized value. If we can get an increase in equalized value, that's going to help us. I mean, it's, it's, it's free expenditures. Well, because the percentage is based on our net balance divided by our equalized value. That tells us where we're at relative to our debt limit. 70%, the target we're looking for, is really, you translate that into 3.5% of our equalized value. That's what we're shooting for. Right now, we're close to 80%, so we're probably more like 3.9% of equalized value. That's still a big number, and that's why we've got to get it down to 3.5 or better. This gets us to 3.5. So if you take the net balance, for example, the 100, under, net balance as of 12/31 for 2014, 147,509,376. You divide that by the 3 billion, 300, or 759 million number, and you get to roughly 3.9%, which is 78.48% of our debt limit used. We can by law go no higher than 5%. We're at 3.9 right now. So legally, we're okay. Financially, no. This isn't acceptable. Council's told it. We know it. We've got to improve.
But that being said, a lot of our major infrastructure in the last, say, 10 years has been turned over where we're not going to have some of that, correct? I mean, I mean, you're always going to have some, obviously. We're going to have street projects, we're just going to have some stormwater projects, but the garage will be done. You know, we did a big upgrade to the sanitary, I mean, to the sanitary treatment plant. So there's a lot of the big, big items that are probably done for 10 or 15 years or more.
Those are good. I mean, the central garage behind us is a huge albatross. Even though we're going to be paying it now, we're not going to be taking on any more debt after next year. That's going to be huge.
And we'll save some, some in utilities and other costs associated to that, too. So, I mean, you know, yes, it's, and the citizens brought it up last night, even, you know, we have to get our debt down under control, but we didn't talk about the plan last night because we really don't have it, other than it's a goal of yours to work on. So I think, you know, that's something that the citizens should be thinking about, too, is that a lot of our major infrastructure projects are complete now.
And a lot of this debt we have for pretty cheap, comparatively cheap, to what a lot of other agencies pay on that debt for.
That's correct. Yeah. And we've done a good job in selling our bonds. We've done a good job of refinancing some of that. You know, that's a credit to our, to, you know, our departments. So when there is an opportunity to reduce our debt or reduce our, the rate that we pay on our debt, then we're going after that, and we're not just sitting complacent.
Well, the other thing was even in the 2008, 2009 period, we were still spending money, which we were criticized four times, but the cost of the projects came in low.
Right.
And the, and the debt was low, so it was really a good, it was an appropriate time to take on projects.
And then, you know, you look at, you know, now with the convention center redone, the hotel redone, those things are all going to, you know, help us because revenue that we didn't have before.
The one caveat that I want to point out is the three asterisk one. I'm probably going to sum it up a lot different than it is here. This is the technical answer, but 2017 is when TIF 7 closes. Once TIF 7 closes, as we, we did talk a little bit last night, we were talking about some of our debt in our, in our TIFs, we will not be able to rely on TIF 7 to be a donor for any, anything else. It will be gone. So to the degree we want money to do more Riverwalk or some new TIF idea, it's going to have to be Pago or it's got to come out of general obligation debt. So that's something that, you know, we just have to know that that, that, so that gets built into our debt assumptions because we, you know, we just approved something last night that we're going to bring to council in a couple of weeks in terms of paying off some Riverwalk or the boatworks. That's coming out of TIF 7. It's an appropriate use of TIF 7 funds, but once TIF 7 closes, we don't have that, that well to draw from anymore. So we just pointed out that that's going to change the dynamics.
Quick question for you, because as, as TIF 7 closes, and we've got a couple of other TIFs, I think, closing, there's some residual amount in there. So say there's 15 million in TIF 7 at that time, we get 36% of that roughly, I think.
Yeah.
As a residual amount, so it's like 6 million dollars.
But TIF 7 isn't going to have that much.
Okay, by that time, but there'll be some residual. What can you use the residual for? Can you use it to pay off, or do you have to, is it, you have limits in terms of what you can use? Because there should be...
You can use it, you can use it on whatever you want. The, the, the issue is not what you can use it on, but if you spend it, it goes against expenditure restraint. So that's, I mean, there's ways to do it. The long-range finance committee, I think, is ultimately going to be taking a look at that and giving you a recommendation. It's probably going to be along the lines of, A, reduce debt, or B, invest it in some housing neighborhoods, things like that. The last year of that TIF, all the money goes into neighborhoods. That's what we've talked about doing. Council hasn't approved that one yet, but when the, when that time comes, which won't come until probably 2016, council will have it before them, do you want to extend TIF 7 one more year to take advantage of the neighborhoods? And I can tell you in 2014 that I will be recommending that to you in two years. It makes perfect sense. What we do with the residual, I think we leave that to long-range finance to look at that, but given everything we've got going, debt reduction is not a bad idea. The real magic in this is not the fact that we've got a wonderful spreadsheet that Trina's been working on to get it down to 70%. Because we show this to Moody's, it doesn't mean anything. It's how we do it. So...
It's actually doing it.
Doing it, it's actually doing it. Saying it and doing it. This is saying it. Doing it means we're going to be presenting you a capital improvement plan that for 2015 is only going to borrow 11.4 million. We're going to have to go through our capital improvement plan and ratchet down. We just can't take a project that I say to a department head, I can't do it in 2015, I'll just move it to 2016 and bury my head in the sand on that issue. Now that we know what our goal is to achieve, we have to say, and we can only plan on 11.4 million in 2017, 18, 19, 20. The only other, and we cross our fingers, if equalized value goes up, we might be able to do a little better. But do we use it to buy down the debt? Or do we, or to buy down our percentage? Or do we do it to say, okay, we got a little more, we're still shooting for 2024? Or 2019? Or whatever goal you ultimately want to shoot for?
So that being said, are you through the long-range finance committee, eventually a recommendation to council for a policy on that, so that there's a sense of direction? Or do you anticipate it would be easier to case-by-case basis?
Well, long-range finance committee is not a policymaking...
No, but they, they do look at...
We can make recommendations.
Make recommendations to council on a policy, correct?
Say that.
Right.
You know, the thing is, is that by putting this together, one of the, one of the benefits of this is, is that obviously, we've, we've got this target here, so we can now begin to look at a five-year capital improvements plan. And rather than, you know, what we've done in the past is, well, it doesn't fit in this year, I'll slot it in next year. Really begin developing a five-year plan, because part of it is, we need to, we need to prioritize the items we need to do if we can't do it. If we think it needs to be done in 2015, but it doesn't fit into that. Now, remember, in 2015, though, we're only talking about, even though it's 11.4, we're only talking about 7.4 in capital improvements, because we have that $4 million that's going to go to the central garage. But this allows us to say, put together a five-year plan for capital improvements and say, we're going to do 11.4. These are the plan, these are the projects that we want to do, and really now begin long range on that.
With room, I think, like what you're talking about, Mount Vernon, that goes from, say, five-years plan, now it has to go back up to the top. I mean, just room for flexibility. I agree with what you're saying, Tom. Not only that point, it's just you've got to have a little bit of flexibility in cases.
We, you know, I'd love to tell you that that five-year plan is going to be set in stone.
Yeah.
But as Steve said...
It wouldn't be set in stone, but you have a pretty good idea, and you know that if, if this is set for year three, but you say, no, I really need to move it up to year two, then you know you're going to have to take something out of year two and move it back to year three.
Right, right. Oh, yeah.
And then you've got that, and you, rather than just saying, well, we'll push it back into ad infinitum.
It's got to keep being 11.4, 11. Each year's going to be 11.4.
Right.
So if you push one back into the next year, something else has got to come out.
But to get to Steve's point, I would welcome input from long-range finance to say, yeah, this is a worthwhile goal. I mean, ideally, when you take a look at our comps, you may say, you know, even 70% is not enough. Your goal initially to me was to get you to 70%. Trina said, you can get it done in six at 11.4, but, you know, but realize that you can't just unfurl mission accomplished, because we're still hugging 70% even by holding to 11.4 for the balance of the next decade. So I was pleasantly surprised, Trina said, we can do it in six years. Boy, thank you, Gary. I needed that. My Ed McMahon over there, thank you. But the issue is that we get it done in six, but we're still, in year 10, we're still teetering.
Right.
You know, a little statistical anomaly like equalized value goes down 1% can screw this up. Now, we cross our fingers and we hope that it goes up. We put efforts into economic development, that number goes up. Then I would say, long-range finance... Then I would say, "Long Range Finance, if the denominator goes up, what advice do you have for the council on the denominator going up? Do we still shoot for, do we shoot for 70 percent earlier, or can we borrow more and still hug 70 percent?" Those are legitimate policy choices for the council. That's your take-home, you know, thoughts for tonight. Those are the types of things you want to think about, but we're going to have to give you a five-year CIP that shows 11.4, recognizing Mount Vernon's of the world are going to happen. And we'll shuffle it, and that's why we'll go through the process every year. We'll reshuffle it. With that said, I have a question for council. I think the first, well, the mayor wanted to talk about next meeting, and I also want some input on, what do you want to see at the next meeting? I think capital improvements are probably a big portion of that. But I will ask you, I'm on the horns of a dilemma because of how tight this is. 11.4 seems like a lot of money, but 11.4 can go just like that. I'm going through a process with Trina, and we're categorizing this very bluntly as gotta-do's for capital improvements, need-to-do's, and want-to-do's. And the gotta-do's are things such as the central garage. We got, I mean, we've, we're already committed contractually. There are other ones that we gotta do because, for example, we have a lot of fire trucks that are going to need to be replaced over the next five years. We have a lot of buses that are going to have to get replaced over the next five years. We can't put those off indefinitely, so we gotta do at least one fire truck. We gotta do at least two buses. We gotta do those in order to, so we don't fall behind. For example, the, one of the fire trucks, we're spending $35,000 a year to keep that thing alive. And as I pointed out to one of my department heads, that's a pickup truck for you. We need to replace that to save that $35,000 a year. I mean, it's all our money. It's collectively our money. So we gotta do those things. So I'm going through those, and I'm adding that to the gotta-do list, and Trina's keeping a running tally, and then we'll do the need-to-do's, and then it's, we want to do, we ought to do, but that's where the discretion comes in. When I give you 11.4, there's going to be a lot that's not going to be on that list. I think what I heard from the council is that you'd like to see it. I assume that you're going to trust my excellent judgment, and it's not to second-guess me, and I know that's not the goal, because you want to know, what are we doing? What are we leaving on the table, Mark? And I was late for a meeting, and Trina was with one of the departments, which I won't disclose, and Trina said, "They need all of these." And it was, they were legitimate requests, and it's the function of falling back, and how do we avoid falling back? So my request for you, give me some feedback in terms of how you want to see that stuff. How do you want to see the things that are not on the 11 million? It's not that we, and I told department heads, it's not for you to come back and say, "Oh, please reconsider me." It's really to get an idea of, wow, there's a lot of legit stuff that we can okay, because I know that you're committed to the 11.4. I mean, I know that.
Well, I guess in that reference, the direction you just said, in a way, because I don't think, at least I don't, know what fire truck needs to be replaced, or what truck needs to be replaced in, say, the street department, or what cemetery needs. So I think you're, we gotta do this to, yeah, that's next, and then maybe. I think, you know, not for council to sit there and say, "Well, jeez, we're going to replace it with this to that," but in a sense of, I think that's a start.
You get the depth. You understand the depth.
You know, I mean, your department heads know better. I think we've all kind of said that over time. They know better than we do of what equipment they need to get replaced or done. Your street department knows what streets need, your engineering department knows what streets need to be done. I mean, I think prioritizing is kind of what we've talked a little bit about.
And they have a priority list.
And justification behind it.
They did a nice job, but a lot of those streets aren't even going to be on the list. They've got, what about?
But again, that's telling our story to the citizens that have that bad street, that we know it's bad, we are going to get to it, but because of our situation, we can't get to it right away. But be patient. Maybe we do a 10-year fix instead that's a lot cheaper, you know? But if it's something to do with our flooding issues or some other major issue, then that street moves up the list, then we also tell, I say, that's why we tell the other people where we're at. And I think telling our story is the best way to let the citizens know that we're not not listening to them, too, or not addressing their concerns.
I think, too, to that point, we've been able to gather information with our citizen surveys, and we talked about it at strategic planning. University has helped us gather all that information, and I think it illustrates that, you know, the public still understands we have a lot of stormwater work to do, but I think they believe that we're making some progress.
Right. As long as we keep showing that we're moving forward, maybe not as fast as we were because of the debt issues, but we're still moving forward, and we're addressing those issues that that's what they're looking for.
I think the case of the fire truck, you know, it shows, if we don't do it, what is the cost?
Yeah, sure.
That's the downside of not doing it.
Thirty-five, 35 a year right now, and that's going to only escalate.
Or a piece of, or a piece of equipment that might not be able to answer the call, so to speak.
Literally, that's the case. In that, in terms of prioritizing, technically, two are due for replacement next year, and I said, "One's gotta do." One is, we ought to do, but if we take a look and spread it out a little more, we can do that. But, you know, everybody's coming to the table with a lot of good, legitimate requests, but we can't do all.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I think that's important for us to remember, is that we want to see both lists, but we have to be committed to the 11.4. Because there will be people that will be lobbying us, I mean, that started, started the last couple of years, and we're going to get lobbying both from citizens and from departments. They're going to come in and say, "Really? Can you, why don't you just add this one on and go to..."
Please, please.
It's only, it's only three cheeseburgers per person if we add this on to the debt, so we've got to be prepared to deal.
Sure, with that issue.
Be committed to the 11.4 and not view it as a fixed figure, so.
Right, right.
Because if we don't, and if we aren't kind of unanimous on that, once, once it begins to go, it will go. It'll go fast, because I'm sure that second list is going to have those things on, which we're all going to say, "My God, I wish we could do that."
Without.
Good for the city, it's good for the citizens.
Without hearing a spiel from the department heads, I would dare say you would have a hard time distinguishing between, if I just gave you two lists and said, "Tell me which is the top," without any presentation, you'd probably have a tough time guessing which one was the top and which one was the second. I mean, they're legit stuff. I mean, it's, we've got things.
But that being said, we can't lose sight of that either. So if it's something that doesn't get in the 15 budget.
Sure as heck better get in 16.
Well, and, right, because we, in the end, we pay for that, that issue. I mean, that's kind of where we're at with some of our streets and some of our stormwaters was years ago not being addressed. So we can't lose that sight of the picture either, that these, maybe didn't make the list this year, but they will for sure the next year, because the importance of them.
But again, going back, if we move it into next year, we've got to be prepared to say something else is more important.
There's always that sliding, almost like a sliding scale.
Pump for a bubble.
That's the advantage of the five years being much more serious.
Right, correct.
You know, the thing is, is that, and I said this when I ran for council, part of the reason why we have some of the debt problems we have is because for too long, this city was cheap. Cheap is not the way you operate things. You operate things frugally, and that when you do things cheaply, in the long run, it costs you a heck of a lot more money. We let our streets go. We let our infrastructure go. We didn't address our stormwater problems for years and years and years, because, you know, citizens wanted a low tax rate. The council members said, "Okay, we'll give you a low tax rate." Then what happened is, is then the citizens started coming forward and saying, "Hey, our streets are, you know, you know, look like Beirut. Now what are we going to do about those?" Well, you know, last night, we heard about a lot of debt that the city has taken on. What have we gotten for it? Take a look around the city. You've got, you know, you have, well, I'm not going to say no more, but you don't have basements filling anymore with, when it rains. You don't have backyards flooding. When you turn on your water tap, you've got good, clean water when it's there. Yes, we still have some bad streets, but boy, if you look at where Oshkosh was years ago, you've got, the streets are in much better repair than they used to be. So when the citizens want, they have to understand that if they want a service, if they want an infrastructure rebuild, there's a cost to that. Now, we as a council, we have this 11.4. We have to focus on that. But again, the key thing is, is can't cheap it out, because when you cheap something out, you're going to pay for it in the long run. You need to be frugal.
Out of respect for the council's time, there are other issues with debt that we can overlay the components of debt, which I wanted to talk about, but it will take some more time, and I'd like to discuss that at the next workshop, because then it'll go right into CIPs in terms of not giving you necessarily the whole final list, but we're going to be pretty close by the time, depending on when we meet, you're going to be pretty close. But the debt and a portion of the CIP, I'd like to discuss at the next meeting, as well as anything else that comes to mind. Now, we can talk about that at our next council meeting on the 13th. That was originally our date. Trina and I talked, and we were thinking, the next council meeting is Tuesday, or the next meeting is the 13th. The meeting after that is Tuesday, August 26th. We're thinking of the 27th. So we throw that out as a suggestion. It's a little later than I had hoped for, but I know the mayor's going to be gone, and...
We had a council meeting scheduled for the 12th. Can't, why don't we, the only person that's not going, well, does this room, does this get used for election night? Or is there a different room? I mean, we had a council meeting scheduled for the 12th, and Pam would be really the only staff that can't make it, right?
It's using the fire truck.
No. I mean, we could easily move, I mean, I know we want these on TV, I guess, but, you know, this is being used for election night. Is there another location? Senior Center or?
To the 12th.
Fire station?
Senior Center is in a pulling place.
Our next meeting after that isn't scheduled. Okay. Can you do it the 12th?
17th of September, I think.
Is it 17th of September?
We need to do it sooner. We need to get it, it needs to be done sometime in August.
I mean, I think we had, like I say, we had a council meeting scheduled for the 12th. Everybody kind of had that date blocked off until the election thing kind of got in the way.
It works for me.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Turnaround time, but.
One thing that Trina pointed out, and I don't think this is a big issue, last year, and this was the first year we did it, Trina, was the audit presentation was at the second meeting. That was just something we instituted last year. We could check, whatever date you pick, we could ask them, or we just have them come at a regular meeting. They've made, they've done, historically, they've done the audit presentation at a regular council meeting, so we can check on them. But whatever date you pick, we were, we were caucusing, so I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch everything. What was the?
Thinking about having it on the 12th.
Okay, that, okay, we were still thinking about that. The only, the issue would be the auditor, but I don't think that's the end of the world if the auditor couldn't make it that date. We've got plenty to talk about without the auditor.
But was the auditor going to be here for the 13th? You're not talking one day different.
We didn't get a date nailed down. I mean, he may have been thinking the 12th anyway, because originally, that was your date anyway. So we'll check with him and see if he's available for the 12th, and then we could just include him. If not, we could still do it. I mean, it's a good point. We're doing it because of the election. We're...
I should be working the election, but I can see if I can.
Oh, that's right, you signed up.
Yep. Depending on what time, you know, I can see if I can cut out a little bit earlier.
I mean, normally, department heads help out, Pam, after eight o'clock, so I guess we'll.
I'll see.
Five to seven, if that's what you want to do.
What do you think?
Works for me.
Where are people, anybody that doesn't, that can't work for? I guess Deb will be in, huh? You have, you have that one. I'm asking if there's anybody else, because if we have two or three, then it's out the window for sure. Not everybody will be at every meeting.
12 works for me.
Yep.
What, 12, five to seven?
Second Tuesday of the month, I would have thought.
And I know Deb will be in town, because I know she's in the 11th and the 13th, so I assume she'll be here on the 12th. So she shouldn't be out of town that week, so. She said she'll be here the 11th and the 13th, so.
And we will be prepared to get into more detail of debt. The CIP won't be as detailed, but we want to really get into the components of what's in the CIP currently, and there's a direct relationship between some of our debt issues and things that are in the CIP. That's what we're going to talk about. Won't have the final CIP, I don't think, but we'll be really close. But we can give you an idea of what the CIP is going to look like without the formal document. You'll have a pretty good idea of what's in and what's out for 15.
One question, it seems a lot of our projects, street projects, have come in under budget. Is that an accurate statement?
Engineers are really good at estimating high, so they look good when the bids come out. Oh, did I say that publicly? So yes, I think you're right. I think they're, you know, they're always careful about that, and I think we have. Typically, I'm not sure where you were going with it, but typically, we borrow less. We sometimes bid out first and then borrow later. We're doing that this year. We haven't borrowed yet for our street projects. We have enough cash flow that we don't have to worry about, you know, running out of money. But normally, we borrow, if we find out a project's 100,000 under, we borrow 100,000 less.
The other thing is, too, is that we also have to remember that when you do the special assessments, we have to make sure that we don't cut it too close. So if there is, if it does go over budget, then we have to schedule another.
Correct.
So there's also that.
That's why you estimate high, too.
Right. So it's...
So we'll plan for five o'clock on the 12th.
Do you also want to include in your next meeting, the six-month financials would be completed? Do you want to do that as a part of this meeting? That might flow well as well.
And at the same time, we may, we'll probably have, we will probably have met with Long Range Finance, so there may be something coming out of that meeting.